Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming in this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. Council members, at this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend John Cole II, who is pastor of Centenary United Methodist Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, good afternoon.
Mayor, I'm missing our Finance Committee meeting tonight, so to be here with you, I must tell you that it's not my favorite meeting in the world.[36.54][36.54](Laughter.) So, I'm happy to miss it once in a while. Making ends meet with tight budgets is never fun, and so I can understand...
You have come home.[46.89][46.89](Laughter.)
Yeah, amen. So let us pray. Gracious and heavenly Lord, giver of all good and perfect gifts, we give you thanks for providing us leaders for our beloved city of Portsmouth. We thank you for their courage to show leadership even when leading in difficult times causes sometimes some hard feelings. I pray to you, Lord, for our City Council and for our mayor, Kenneth Wright, give them wisdom to govern justly and with a common interest in our city in mind. We pray for all of our city employees and especially lift up our teachers in this season of SOLs who work so tirelessly to impart knowledge and wisdom to our young people of our community. We also lift up our law enforcement officers who often find themselves between the will of our lawmakers and the sensibilities of our community. Give our policemen and women the virtues of patience and compassion and understanding as well as a righteousness that makes their peacekeeping authentic and believable. Help us to remember that they enforce the laws that we have crafted and codified through due process and lawmaking. Lord, where there is injury and our cities wounded, bring your healing. Have us all to see each other as unique creatures of your divine will, and help us to love one another even as you love us. Where there is brokenness in issues of justice, send forth your righteousness and mercy. Help us all to surrender our individual pride to your will. Where our attitudes about our city and our neighbors are incorrect or wrong, Lord, correct us and send us on the right path. Lord, all these things we ask, especially, Lord, your blessing upon this meeting and upon our City Council and upon the good citizens of Portsmouth. I ask this, Lord, in my Savior's name, Jesus Christ, and may my prayers of intercession bring blessing to all those who call Portsmouth their home. Amen.
(Inhales) Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much, Reverend Cole. And I also see we have in attendance one of our constitutional officers, our treasurer, Mr. Jimmy Williams. You're here to support your pastor? That's always good.[231.12][231.12](Laughter.) That's right. Now, you're going to the same meeting he's going to. All right. Thank you again, Pastor, and it's good to see you, Mr. Williams. Good afternoon. Members of City Council, please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Members of City Council, you have before you consideration the minutes of a call meeting of May the 26th, 2015, and a regular meeting of May 26th, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, 15-223, Public Hearing on a Rezoning and Use Permit Application. Item A, Z1502, Churchland. Michael Perry, representing Commonwealth Assisted Living, requests a rezoning to expand an existing assisted living facility. The expansion request is for 24 additional beds, a new entrance, and additional parking. The request includes 4904 and 4908 West Norfolk Road. The property is designed as low-to-medium-density, single-family residential on the city's comprehensive plans generalized future land use map. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and a sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Jonathan Hartley, Planning Administrator with the City Planning Department. You actually have two items on your agenda this evening that are related to Churchland House. The first is the rezoning of two parcels, and the second is then a use permit that is required for the expansion that's proposed by Churchland House. Churchland House is located at the intersection of West Norfolk Road and Cedar Lane, and what is... The first application before you is a request to rezone the two parcels that are hatched on the left-hand zoning map. Both of those parcels are zoned GR, General Residential. They're requesting that they be rezoned to URH for the expansion of Churchland House assisted living facility. Immediately to the north or behind the property is a water tower that's owned by the city of Portsmouth. To the east is the residential community of Castle Heights. To the south... Excuse me. To the east is residential. To the south is the residential community of Castle Heights. And then to the west, you have essentially the Churchland House and a daycare center, and then a church across the road. Churchland House has essentially grown over a period of time assembling pieces of property. What they currently own today essentially is all that is in red with the exception of one residential lot, which is included in this rezoning, which is the one that's closest to Cedar Lane. And I'll try to point it out here if I can. I'm not having much luck with the pointer, so it's the... But one of those parcels is not owned by them. The other piece is the daycare center that is the white parcel that's amongst the rest of the shaded parcels. And they've been assembling these properties since 1987, buying pieces. They've acquired the parcel on the furthest right, as well as the... What was the bank parcel right at the intersection of West Norfolk Road and Cedar Lane. The expansion that is proposed... Well, first of all, the parcels that are proposed for rezoning are shown in blue. The expansion consists of two wings, one coming from the front of the facility out towards West Norfolk Road, and the other going east, which is essentially an extension of a wing that was their previous expansion, that'll be behind 4904 West Norfolk Road. These are pictures of the houses that are on those properties. The upper one is 4908, the lower one 4904. And that concludes the slides. In order to expand this facility, it is essential or necessary that they have these parcels rezoned to accomplish what they wish to do. There are other issues that because of the nature of the zoning versus the use permit, we have elected to address in the use permit since we have the ability to impose or require conditions as opposed to requesting voluntary proffers. One of the key issues with this rezoning and application was the potential impact on surrounding residences. But with that, the Planning Commission considered this request on May 5th and recommended seven to zero approval as presented. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
And the applicant is here if you have questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments, none here? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z1502. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item Z1502.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Steve Blaine, representing the applicant, Commonwealth Assisted Living. I think Mr. Hartley's report is thorough. We're in agreement with the recommendations as put forward by the commission. You should know that we did have a neighborhood meeting back in January about the time we made the application, met with all the neighbors to make sure they were aware of the application, and we're in agreement with the conditions, which you'll hear more about when Mr. Hartley presents the special use permit. We'll try to answer any questions that you have. I've got the project manager, Mr. Willis, here with me as well.
Any feedback? Did you actually go to a civic league meeting or just went door to door?
We put flyers in mailboxes, invited people to have coffee at the facility, and about two dozen people showed up and seemed content with it.
Very good. Thank you. Okay? Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Members of council, seeing no additional speakers coming forward, this public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved seven zero. Item B, UP1502, Churchland. Michael Perry, representing Commonwealth Assisted Living, requests a use permit to expand an existing assisted living facility. The expansion request is for 24 additional beds and new entrance and additional parking. The request includes 4904, 4908, 4916, and 4940, West Norfolk Road. The property is designed as commercial, institutional, and low-to-medium-density, single-family residential on the city's comprehensive plans generalized land... Future land use map. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this is part B of the request that you just considered and voted on. Essentially, this is the request for the use permit. The use permit gives us the ability to attach conditions which give us an opportunity to fine tune what may be permitted on the property. There is currently a use permit that limited the number of beds and tied it to a conceptual site plan that was submitted at that time. So essentially, what you're doing is amending that use permit to allow for the expansion of the facility as is proposed in your packet. Again, this is the historical assemblage of the various parcels that they've done over the years to get where they are. The wings are proposed to the east and the south of the existing facility. In this concept plan, they've also proposed some additional parking that would be on the bank lot. That may or may not be necessary when we get to the actual site plan review and approval process. An elevation of the building, and then the photographs that you saw earlier of the surrounding land uses to the north, south, east, and west. With that, I just wanted to kind of summarize some of the conditions, and then I'll answer any questions. First of all, there's a condition that the development be in conformity with the concept plan, that there are no more than 104 residents at the facility. One of the concerns that the planning staff had was the impact on the residential community, and so we've added a condition that requires that the residences that are there remain as single-family residences and not be used as part of the assisted living facility. And that's just to protect the character of that section of West Norfolk Road. Require that they install the screening between those residences and the institutional use, which is a zoning requirement, and the standard, they pay all taxes, keep all licenses current, et cetera. And with that, I'll try to entertain any questions. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of seven to zero.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments here? All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP1502. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP1502.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Steve Blaine, on behalf of the applicant. Again, happy to entertain any questions that you have. Want to thank in particular Mr. Hartley and Ms. Porter, who we enjoyed working with very much, and were very thorough in this applicant's review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members of City Council, seeing no additional speakers, this public hearing is closed.
With the option?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved seven zero. Item C, UP1505, Paradise Creek Industrial Corridor. Stephen E. Heretic, on behalf of Per Properties, is requesting a use permit to operate a concrete processing facility, including the use of portable stone crushing equipment at 3991 Elm Avenue. Per Properties is also requesting to deviate from the access and screening requirements for heavy industrial facilities in the IN Heavy Industrial District. The property is designated for heavy industrial uses on the city's comprehensive plans generalized future land use map. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, again, my name is John Hartley, Planning Administrator with the City Planning Department. As kind of a continuation of the discussion and work session, what I'd like to do at this point is present the use permit application that they've submitted. Essentially, PER is located between the Norfolk Naval Shipyard and the Jordan Bridge along the Elizabeth River. The top photo is a photograph just as you go into the facility, and there's a sketch on the bottom that shows essentially what... A rendering of what the granary facility and the warehousing that's proposed on the site might look like. It's our understanding that this is a port facility, and under the zoning ordinance, port facilities have been determined to be a permitted use. So the granary operation that's proposed there and the storage buildings... Two buildings are proposed at about 27,000 square feet are all considered part of that port facility. What is before you tonight is the request for a concrete batch plant or concrete mixing facility and the storage and crushing of aggregate, which the zoning ordinance and staff have determined is processing and is not necessarily part of the port facility, even though it's on the same property. So again, I emphasize what's before you tonight is the use permit for the concrete plant and the aggregate storage and crushing, not necessarily the grain facility, which is a permitted use under the zoning ordinance. This is kind of a little sketch, and I... As the mayor requested, I put a copy of a blown-up site plan at all of your desks before you came in this evening. There are really four pieces of the project. Again, you have the grain and storage. That's not part of the request tonight. That is a permitted use, part of, again, a port operation. You have the wharf, which is also not part of the application. That's essentially where the ships tie up and they unload or load. The two other pieces that are part of this application is the concrete production, which is circled in yellow, and then the aggregate storage, which is in a gray, and it's the kidney-shaped piece, as we've called it at the staff level, that's on the screen. Again, a picture of the facility as you drive into it with the Jordan Bridge in the background. To the west, there are a couple of other industrial sites. The lower picture is a site of the SIP-SIP cogeneration facility that's down in the vicinity. To the north, you have the Norfolk Naval Shipyard. The Navy has been involved in the process of reviewing this application and commenting on it pretty much since we received the application. Just north of this site is one of the berths that they use for aircraft carriers. And of course, you have the bridge that crosses the river on the north of Portsmouth Beltline. Thank you. To the south, you have the Jordan Bridge, and in the lower picture, you can begin to see... Kind of see the containment basin that's being built through the EPA grant in cleaning up the Atlantic Woods Industries site just south of this property. This last slide is a slide of the PER property in relationship to that Atlantic Wood Industries cleanup. There are a number of components to that. The one that's on this property and the adjoining property underneath the Jordan Bridge is the containment area, essentially where all of the material that is dredged out of the river that is contaminated would be placed. And so it's taken a considerable amount of time on their part to construct that containment basin and get it in shape in order to receive those materials. You have the staff report, which summarizes the size and scope of the concrete plant in terms of its production, one of the... As well as the conditions that are being proposed. It is a fairly small operation in relationship to others that are in the region. They are essentially using an enclosed concrete mixing facility in order to control dust as well as secure their materials that they're mixing. In terms of the crushing facility, there are a number of spraying devices within that crushing plant that are intended to keep the dust down. The conditions specifically... And these are conditions that were... Some of them were suggested by the Navy and have been incorporated. We incorporated all of the conditions that the Navy suggested, the first being that the development be in substantial conformity with the concept plan, which you have in front of you, that the aggregate crushing equipment be limited to the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There is an exception here during construction, as well as during emergencies. If you've ever been through an emergency, you know sometimes you need materials at off-hours and like to be able to get to them. So if there's a need for concrete after a major disaster, a hurricane, whatever, it's possible to get it here. The aggregate crushing equipment is referenced in the conditions by specific model. Should that ever need to be replaced, that model would serve as the standard for the largest piece of replacement equipment that could go in. The cement mixing area is required to be self-contained and will be located in a shell building, and that no other batch plants will be permitted elsewhere on the site.
Where is that going to be? Is that over here in this peanut section or all close to the shipyard?
I'll go back to the... It's in the yellow on this.
Okay. Is that all going to be housed? Is that under the roof or is that outside?
My understanding, according to this requirement, it all has to be inside a shell building.
And before you continue, what were the conditions that the Navy had put on the ...
Essentially, they are incorporated in these, and I believe you have a copy of the letter in your packet at the back, which lists the conditions that they recommended. Part of this application, as was read in the hearing, that there are two conditions of our zoning ordinance, which the amendments in December give council the authority to vary or deviate from. One was the access. The other is the screening. There is a condition here that screening be provided... I want to make sure I say this correctly, along the southern boundary, which is essentially the boundary in the containment... Nearst the containment area. Very difficult to screen anything else. Again, if you think about the rendering below those grain silos are 85 feet tall, you're not going to screen them in any effective way. The feeding elevator for the aggregate is 55 feet tall. So in terms of that kidney-shaped aggregate storage area, you're not going to really be able to effectively screen that. So at least we've proposed and required as a condition screening that would screen the side that's available to screen, which is to the south. In terms of the access, the city engineer has reviewed both traffic impact and road impact analysis and determined that they... Both of those studies are acceptable in terms of its impact on the road. And so both of those requirements essentially appear to be appropriate to waive, given Going back to the conditions, there were two others specifically from the Navy. One is that the use of materials or any operation of an inherently explosive nature on the site in connection with its aggregate and ready-mix production operations shall be prohibited. And then there is the... There is a tall tower in association with the grain elevator, and they've asked that there be no video equipment installed or used from the top of that tower system. Finally, the final conditions deal specifically with taxes, licensing, permitting, et cetera, and ensuring that all licenses, permits, and taxes are current and up to date at all times. And with that, I'll conclude by saying that the Planning Commission did recommend at their meeting on May 5th, approval of this request for a use permit and the two deviations from the requirements of the ordinance with the conditions seven to zero. With that, I'll attempt to answer any questions. I know the applicant is here, and of course, Ms. Kaler's here with Economic Development. Should you have questions?
Thank you. First of all, let me say I'm a little torn behind this because I was very excited when we announced in 2010 this new company coming to Portsmouth, the 16 acres on the waterfront that we were in the process of cleaning up and transforming over into putting on the tax roll. I mean, we advertised that we're going to create 35 new jobs. The company was going to invest about $3.5 million.
The company was going to invest about $3.5 million.
The company was going to invest about $3.5 million, 35 new jobs, and there's even an incentive package here of $300,000, a grant, that they would be eligible for once the thing got up and running. And we have yet to get to that point. It's 2015. We understood then that there was going to be a process to getting there, but, and now we're switching gears and want to add a second function to this site, which doesn't fit the business model that was described to us and the thing that I voted for, and still supports the grain piece. I'm very concerned about this construction, crushing concrete, and midstream of trying to materialize and do what you told the council they were going to do, and now they're changing horses. So I'm very concerned about that. And because of that, and because they haven't delivered on the piece that we announced and talked about since 2010, I'm going to vote against this concrete crushing operation to be added dimension to this site. Councilmember Meeks.
Thank you, Mayor. I remember about two years ago, when they came forth, we asked them to come back and get a use from it. And one of, me and one of my colleagues wrote out there and looked at the piece, and you have, in the orange, you have a concrete plant already. And they make concrete pipes and beams, and on that, and they, if you click back to a couple, you can see where they're actually storing their aggregate. One more. No, no, go back. Right there at the bottom left in those, that's where the other company, it stores their concrete materials to make their concrete, their sand, their stone, and their aggregate right there. So you have the same type of business that close. If you go up where SIPSA is, SIPSA is doing an outside recycling with ash, with value from it. And ash, you see it all over the newspaper, causing harm to your, to the public. It doesn't matter where it is, they're making ash very toxic. Not saying SIPSA is, I'm just saying that's what the news is. And they're doing a process outside, recycling materials, they're getting out of their ash. All right? That's right against the property. Right, is that, would be to the west?
Yeah, it's to the left. Let me, let me just see if I can, yeah, it's not really in any of these.
If you go up, it is, you keep on, one more or two more.
This is the SIPSA cogeneration plant.
Yeah, right. Yep. And on the backside of that, they're doing a recycle of the ass, of the ash. And they're doing it outside, it's not undercover. You have that right up the street. Then if you go along the river to Titan, right against the port, within about 1,000 yards of Port Norfolk, they have their stone outside, they have their silo right against the interstate. So I do agree that, I wasn't here when they changed the game, but since I've been here, we asked them to come back and apply for a use permit. They've done so. The planning has voted 7-0, so I will be in support of this project.
Very good. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. No questions. I too will be joining my colleague in supporting this. This piece of property, I think it's important to note, has been vacant for 60 years, and nobody's been beating their door down to put any business there. So I think that's important. The other thing is, near the Jordan Bridge site, on the other side, there's a similar operation, as my colleague pointed out. So the fact that we can get a piece of property that's been sitting vacant for 60 years, that's going to bring jobs, wages to Portsmouth, I think that's, I think that's a win for this city. The Navy's all right with it, with conditions, and those conditions are in the use permit. Also, the, we haven't had any negative feedback from the community, so I think it's, I think it's good. I intend to vote for it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Dr. Whittaker.
Yes, Mr. Hartley, I had a question for you.
Sir.
You mentioned in your statement that you were distinguishing, I believe it came to the crushed concrete, you said that the committee looked at processing versus port facility when looking at the crushing aspect of this business.
Correct.
Can you elaborate, when you said you were distinguishing between processing and port facility?
Correct. The zoning ordinance has, differentiates between processing as opposed to just transport and storage, which would be a port facility. So when you have a grain or warehousing, you're dealing with bulk as opposed to containerized goods. That's, that's just part of the, and typical of a port operation. We actually, we're unusual in Portsmouth in that we have not only one, this facility, which is proposed, but APM, while it's operated by the state, is privately owned. Very unusual for a city, for any city, to have a private port, but we do. So under the zoning ordinance, we recognize that as the ship, the shipping aspect, the handling of goods and materials. In contrast to that, we have what is proposed tonight, which is the concrete mixing of materials to create another component or another material, and the processing of large, larger material into smaller material to add to that concrete. So we view that as processing, and that's the distinction that we've made through the zoning definitions and the zoning ordinance between what was, what's the grain facility and the warehousing, and the concrete plant, and the aggregate storage and crushing. Does that make sense?
Right. And so as originally presented under the original business model, the processing was not a part of the original business model, but there was some crushing of concrete going on?
Yeah. Basically, under the original model, the intent was to bring in a small facility for the purpose of installing the wear and constructing the other facilities on site. So it was intended as a temporary facility during construction.
But it wasn't, right, but it, but it was not initially envisioned as being a separate concrete crushing operation.
Correct. It was intended to be there just during construction, and that, there was a, that was the understanding initially.
And my concern with that is, and we asked the question earlier in our earlier session about the sale price of that property, and it would seem to me that the city would have received more, that property would have been valued at a higher price had the model been presented of the grain and the crushed concrete. That changes the whole scale of operation on that property, changes the value, and it just gives an appearance that the property was sold at a lesser value with a greater intent in mind. And to me, that's, there's some inequity there that should be corrected.
And I really can't say anything or respond to that. I'm a land-use guy.
Yeah. Well, that's why I was asking you what process it asks you, because that process was not originally there when the property was valued.
It was there as a temporary use.
Right, but not as a crushed concrete separate operation.
Right.
All right, thank you. Let me just add, I'm sitting here looking at our press release that went out in 2010 when we announced this, and we were excited about this new company coming to Portsmouth, and the $3.5 million investment they were going to make in establishing this, creating 35 new jobs, no fewer than 35 new jobs, and the company would develop this facility on the property being sold by PPIC and located on the Elizabeth River, about 16 and 1/2 acres, deep water, all the great things. The interim mayor at that time, Mayor Bernard Griffin, was excited about this thing getting started and up and running. And again, the $60,000 anticipated in annual tax revenue to the city was projected, as well as the 35 new jobs, and none of this has materialized, and we're switching horses and wanting to add another dimension. And I think, Dr. Whittaker, what you just said kind of explains what my concern and reservations are, and I'd like for this company to do what they came to town and said they wanted to do here with that land. And after you get this up and running, if there's an opportunity for you to expand or add another dimension or any of those things, I would like to see and entertain that at that time. I'm just apprehensive now that you haven't done what you originally said you wanted to do, and you're already at the well asking for a change in the modification. It just, it doesn't sit well with me, and again, that's the reason why I'm going to vote against this. Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, sir. Just one comment about your comment before I ask a couple of questions. I'd like the next speakers to answer. You mentioned they haven't done what they said they were going to do, and it's already 2015. But I believe they have not been able to proceed based on the, we talked about this earlier.
The EPA, that's right.
The EPA, I mean, they're, they're on track, following, shadowing behind the EPA cleaning up the site. This says it would take five years, and it's five years later, and this is where we are. My question to one of the gentlemen that's going to speak, back in 2010, we talked about a certain investment, a certain number of jobs. I hope that when you come up here to speak, that you will answer the question now with this tweaking of what's going to be happening, what is the anticipated investment, and what type of jobs are we looking at now? How has that changed, if at all? I don't know.
Why don't we bring them up now? Why don't we bring them up now, so we can get that answered? Because we'll go around and around.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
You're the PPIC. We're talking about the business.
Okay, that's fine.
I need the business owner to speak to us. Is he here? The person representing the company to talk about the new business model, the new revenue, and all of the other things that this added dimension is?
Are we out of order?
Yes, you are.
I'm saying.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name's Robert Crockett. I'm here representing PER Properties tonight. I'm also subbing for Steve Heretic, who, as you guys know, have other obligations this evening. So let me tell you a quick story. My relationship with this project goes back to 2010. I remember walking on that property, the vacant property, in the summer of 2010 with the developer, and looking at it as an opportunity to do a number of things, a number of things, including operate a granary. In this case, the developer operates a granary in Virginia Beach on the intercoastal waterway, has experienced, extensive experience in doing this. He also operates a number of other businesses. So I'll get to that in just a minute. But first, I want to thank the staff. We spent an awfully long and difficult project to get through. They've done a remarkable job. I want to make sure that you understand how thorough they have been. I also want to speak to the U.S. Navy's involvement, because they too have been extraordinarily involved in our communication and their interest in this project as it relates to their very important government efforts on the Elizabeth River. So let me speak to a couple of questions that were asked earlier. So when we first went through the negotiation process with the city in PPIC, we were very clear about our expectations to want not just a granary, but a concrete operation and an aggregate operation. We were very clear. At the time of those negotiations, you were coming back, you were coming off a very complicated and difficult project relating to the ethanol plant. And we were advised by the city at the time that it wasn't, the timing wasn't good for us to stand down on the concrete, but we will make those temporary at the time. So we did. You might say we were conscientious objectors at the time, but it was always a part of our project in totality to make it sustainable and a commercial operation for the city of Portsmouth and here. So as it relates to the jobs, Mr. Mayor, great question. We originally committed, the PER committed to 35 full-time FTEs. That is unchanged. In fact, with the addition of both the aggregate operation and the concrete plant, we will see a modest increase in that total. Hard to say exactly at the time, but there will be a modest increase. The tax base is significant. Originally, we projected $60,000 based on real estate and property, and that was a fair number at the time based on that. But when you start adding commercial operations, both on the granary side, on the concrete side, and the aggregate side, it gets to be fairly significant. We estimate just south of maybe a penny to your tax hit, so that's somewhere around $600,000. That is significant, quite frankly. That's a significant change in the way that we've structured it. A couple of things about the project itself. It's not any different than our first original vision. What it is, we think, is a more sustainable venture. So granary is a seasonal operation tied to the harvesting of grain wherever it is, right? And so what the concrete and aggregate allows us to do is operate, you know, 12 months a year in a sustained environment, and we think that's good for the operation. The other great thing about the concrete and aggregate is their water-related uses. Could you go back to the slide with the wharf? So just some perspective. So just want to give you a quick, just a quick history lesson here as well. So the project is a linear project and always follows behind EPA, always follows behind EPA. So EPA has not started dredging the Elizabeth River yet. So as a water-related use, you can't go touch the water until EPA is finished. The wharf that you see in blue is a 960-foot concrete structure. If you wondered why there was optimum, you know, the production efficiency of our operation, we needed to have that concrete plant on-site, it's because the magnitude of the wharf itself. And for, again, history lesson, that wharf has already been approved by the Corps of Engineers, VMRC, and Virginia DEQ. So the other thing I wanted to mention about?
That's the berm, as it's referred to, correct?
Well, actually, the berm is the EPA berm.
That's all right, go ahead.
So the berm actually is, if you see the gray, Mr. Mayor, that's actually EPA's berm. The blue is the PER wharf.
Okay.
And so there's the difference. So they're taking the toxic spoils from the river and putting them behind the EPA berm or the berm in gray.
Got it.
Just a quick logistics perspective. So with that, I guess I wanted to leave a couple of things, and I'm probably not covering everything, but I'd be glad to take questions. Trying to be thorough to address some of the conversations in the work session, but some of the conversations I sort of have heard this evening. But we are committed, and I can speak for the developer, to making this project work. It is not an easy project. There's a reason this property stayed vacant for so long, probably, because not everybody was willing to tackle having to communicate and work so extensively with EPA. And he is required to do that, and it requires us to maintain a very active dialogue with the U.S. EPA on this project because of the proximity. That property's not a super fund in the front, but it's adjacent to it, so that's important. So with that, I want to ask Chairman Barm if he has anything to say, and I'd be glad to take questions.
Let me, let me just ask you. You say you're modest increase in employment.
Right.
So you don't know what that is, but we can get, instead of $60,000 a year, we can get a whole penny, which is $700,000.
We're thinking just south of the penny.
Is there any reason why we didn't have those figures and that type of information submitted?
Because we were basing on a full-time commercial operation. We're basing our numbers just on the temporary operation to build concrete for the facility itself.
For the temporary, right. So is there, right, so is there a problem with you doing what we initially agreed to, and then after you get the grain operation up and running, does it hurt you to do a Phase 2 and come back to do this piece once you show us that you can meet the original obligation?
Certainly would look at that, but remember, it's all based on productivity and commercial success. So you have to, and again, everything could change on a bad season, a wet grain season. There's unpredictable.
For the grain or for the crushing?
Well, again, a commercial operation is, well, you run a business, so you don't know where you're going to start or where you're going to end up. You have certainly projections, but those are projections. So, but we'd be glad to sit down with city staff to work through some of those numbers with you.
Yes, sir.
The only thing I was going to say on behalf of the PPIC, I started on the PPIC in 2010. In fact, my first meeting was when this piece of property came up for a vote for sale. So personally, I've followed this for the last five years, as long as, as well as the commission itself, through all of the processes that we've had. commission itself, through all the processes that we've had to go through to get to this point. We unanimously endorsed this as a commission a year and a half ago. The applicant, I believe, has followed to the letter of the law every single requirement that has been placed on him. He has now been four years basically sitting on the side waiting for the EPA to finish the project that they have going on before he can basically break ground. That pier there is going to take a long time to build. So he's been paying on this piece of property for four years and not able to make it worth, generate any income for him. So he definitely is doing what he initially intended to do. I think he will continue to do what the plan is. And again, on behalf of PPIC, I feel like we should endorse this.
Let me ask you, since you've been there, and I remember when you came on board, and thank you for your service, at what time during those five years that you knew that they were going to switch gears and want to start implementing a concrete crushing? What time were you notified? And why wouldn't you bring that to the council so we can consider all of this?
That was brought to the council in a work session, and I can't remember exactly when it was.
In 2010?
No, I believe it was 2013 or even.
Right. 2010 is when this was brought to the council.
That was in 2010.
And when all this was approved.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a reason why, and he just said that they knew all along they wanted to do this, but somebody told them the timing wasn't right because of the ethanol plant, so let's hide this away and bring it out later?
I don't feel like that that was the intention at all.
That's what he just said.
So, okay. I think you have last year.
My question for Mr. Crockett. And we just received the press release that came out in 2010. We just received that when we came in. And the issue that was raised in regards to the initial project, and you were mentioning that the crushed concrete production was part of the initial plans, and PPIC was aware of that. In the press release, it only speaks, specifically says that it's for export business for agricultural grain.
So I can answer that question. So within the agreement itself, the concrete operation, and I think this was mentioned by staff, the concrete operation, the aggregate operation were part of a temporary, a temporary operation to build the facility itself.
Right.
Right. But it wasn't in the press release, but it was certainly part of the agreement itself.
Right. That was, that was part of, I guess, what some of the stone concrete that's used there in the facility.
Right. So again, if you look at the substantial nature of both the wharf and all of the other operations, it was, it's still absolutely necessary to build the facility.
Right. But what you're proposing is not to use it just to build a facility now, it's actually a separate.
It's a commercial operation.
Right.
It's included within the granary itself.
Right. And my concern, like I said earlier, is just that with that not being a part of the original purchase price amount, it was seen that the value that the land was purchased for was undervalued because that production operation was not taken into account at the time.
I can't speak to the PPIC or the city at the time.
Right. And that's what, that's what my concern is.
Thank you.
I can say, as far as the value of the property, that was basically with the EDA working that out. Again, I just came on PPIC when this was coming about. As Mr. Moody had stated, the piece of property sat vacant for 60 years. I think somebody wanted to come in and bring trash across that facility. They wanted to handle medical waste across that facility. None of that was viable. So putting a price on something that you don't know what you want to use it for, again, that's EDA. But I don't think we could argue that.
Okay. Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, Mayor. Part of the reason we asked for the use permit when y'all came a year or so ago was so we'll be able to put more supervision over what you're doing, we'll have a voice at the table to make sure if you didn't follow protocol or whatever you put into permit use, that we could take your permit. And I think that's one of the things that I think we're forgetting because we kind of directed them to go and ask for this use permit to get approval so we could have the city manager's team to keep a watchful eye over them, make sure they're not polluting the water environment. And they came and asked to crush concrete. So, I mean, and if you go to Titan, I know you're saying that, but if you go to Titan, their wasted washout concrete, they crush it right there on site. They take their material by the water. The place right across the way, they crush their material, their washout and their waste right there on site. So it's not any different than any of these other companies are doing the same thing. They're just having a use permit where these companies, I mean, don't require use permit. And, you know, did they change the game? Do they, you know, but we get the charge for everything they sell off that belt, correct? The aggregate you produce for the crushed concrete, that's sales tax, correct? So, you know, they're creating income for the city by even doing the crushed concrete. And the worser piece of anything in the air is sips of what they're doing on the outside of that place with the coal.
All right. Dr. Whitaker, then we're going to move on. Yes, sir.
Is this a first reading item, or it is?
Yes.
It's a first read. In the, in the process between the first and second reading, will there be any additional negotiations with the company, Mr. Manager?
Negotiations for what? I don't understand.
Well, one of the issues, one of the issues that I've raised is that it appears that there's additional operations that are going on on the property that were not initially taken into account when that property was valued and sold.
I think the sales agreement has already been enacted between the PPIC and.
I'm not talking about that. That's, he's already purchased the property.
Right.
I think that there should be some consideration, given that there was an operation that was not revealed to the city at the time, that is now taking place, that has now changed the value of that property. And is that an area that needs to be pursued between the first, if you don't feel so?
I serve at the pleasure of council. If you direct me to do that, I can do that.
Well, council would, but I'm just asking, are there any negotiations that would be taking place?
I had planned any, but I will if you direct me to do so.
Okay. All right.
If council directs me, I will do that.
Okay. All right. Let me, and before you take your seat, we're still on course for the 35 jobs, the grain production and shipping, the $300,000 grant that you have been approved for once you get the place up and running, and the $60,000 annuity. That has no bearing on whether or not we crush concrete or not. Is that right, Mr. Crockett?
That is, that is in the contract.
All right. Thank you. All right. Good night, y'all.
Let me say thank you very much, by the way, for the time and the effort and the energy you put into this project. We appreciate it very much.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Edmonds.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, Mayor. There's going to be some negotiations done between now and the next time this comes before us.
Nah, there ain't no negotiation.
No?
No.
Yes?
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 1505. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 1505. Members of city council, this public hearing is closed.
With adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is denied by a vote of three to four. Unfinished Business 15-196 Code Amendment, Item A, ordinance granting, excuse me, ordinance adopting the proposed amendments to Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia pertaining to flood protection. The proposed amendments modify references to the latest flood insurance rate maps. To become effective in June 2015, CA 1501, first reading vote, five zero, approved. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Dr. Prue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Members of city council, if I can take you back to the public hearings for just a moment, even though you deny this UP 1505, according to council's rules, normally it would be a second reading. This item was denied. Do you want it to come back for a second reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So this item will come back for your next meeting. Okay. City Managers' Report 15-224, Adoption of an Ordnance A: Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $118,930 from the Land and Water Conservation Fund and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund. Item B: Appropriating $118,930 to be received from the Elizabeth River Project in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund. And C: Authorizing the execution of agreements for the receipt of the grant funds and the Elizabeth River Project funds and the use of said funds to perform improvements to Paradise Creek Nature Park. Vision principles: Bold new directions, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and lifelong learning communities. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Thank you, Prue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 15-225, Adoption of an Ordnance: Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $187,500 from the Virginia Port Authority and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2015-16 Grants Fund for the construction of a fishing pier at City Park. Vision principles: Bold new directions, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have registered speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldy-Kutrofsky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. A momentary digression for those who are interested in the primary results but don't have access at the moment to electronic media. Challenger Steve Heretic is claiming victory in the 79th House of Delegates District. Senator Cosgrove is declared the winner by a two-to-one margin. I'm speaking tonight about this item, which is a grant-funded project spoken about by one of the council members who sought reelection last year as his signature item. That notwithstanding, my concerns have to do with, first of all, the purpose of this funding as identified by the Virginia Port Authority, which is to say, aid to local The General Assembly in 1986 established the Commonwealth Port Fund in order to support port capital needs of all ocean, river, or tributary ports within the Commonwealth. Although the Port Authority has graciously granted our application, I question whether the construction of a fishing pier really fits that purpose. In a city that has a crumbling boat-launching ramp at City Park, which has to do with boat ingress and egress from land, or launch and retrieval from land, that to me seems more port-related. A crumbling seawall at which tall ships have tied up in the past, that seems more of a port-related sort of issue. And so the first concern is appropriateness. The second concern has to do with our master recreation plan, which the council member who supported the fishing pier trotted out when citizens came here night after night, council night after council night, talking about a multicultural center in Truckston. So I would ask, where on the prioritization list in that master plan was a fishing pier? The third point I would make is that as an item coming before you as a grant-funded proposal, it bypassed the normal public input sessions that would have preceded any vote to adopt such a project had it been funded from city money. So, you know, where is the public support for this item? There's been no manifestation in this chamber of any large-scale support for such a project. Now, it's easy to spend somebody else's money, but when it comes down to the bottom line, all money that is raised at all levels of government ultimately came from taxpayers. So I think that any project needs full vetting. The last issue I want to raise with this is, in the presentation that the city made to the Port Authority in seeking the grant, there is a list of items that totals $209,400. The total grant request was $150,050 with $52,350 to be made up by the city. Now we have $187,000, which is something less than $209,400. And so what explains the discrepancy? How are we going to build what was a $209,000 amenity on $187,500? The numbers don't add up. So for these reasons, I would ask you to defer the item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
There are no additional speakers on this item.
With adoption.
We have a, excuse me?
Second.
I don't.
Sorry, adopted and approved.
I have you in your office.
Okay, I have you as a non-agenda speaker, Ms. Tsai. You can come forward.
Thank you. I'm Donna Tsai, and I live in the Woodbine Farms. I didn't plan to speak to y'all tonight, so I don't have anything written. But after I heard Mark, thank you so much, because he really knows how to explain everything I don't know how to explain. But when I heard about all the complications that was doing with the golf issues, I was thinking, how would y'all consider looking to building this fishing pier? I mean, that's not a lot of work. You got all this golfing things you're working with, and now you want to add to it the pier. So I just want to say that I agree with Mark. That's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Tsai.
Members of council, there are no additional speakers on this item.
With adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 15-226, Adoption of an Ordnance: Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $118,930 from the 15-226, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $130,000 in the FY 2014-15 Golf Fund for the unassigned fund balance of the 2014-15 General Fund for operating expenses and repairs at the golf courses operated by the city. Vision principle: Quality of life. I have our speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldikutrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council. Since I spoke last, the Virginian Pilot has declared Mr. Heretic the winner in the 79th Relative to the item at hand, I spoke up, I signed up in opposition to this item because you have to sign up as being in favor or opposed. Actually, I just want to make some points about these golf assets that the city holds. In the first place, there were decisions made before any of you came on council, except Councilmember Moody, that are affecting the course of the city vis-à-vis the golf courses There is a debt burden that the city carries for improvements made years ago that were necessary if the courses were going to do any amount of business. Before the city started operating them, when the lease with Mr. Harper expired, they were in pretty poor condition by all accounts. And so, we had to make a capital investment, both in the links and Bydaway. And Bydaway fared well enough under the old management agreement that Golf Digest highlighted it, spotlighted it, as the most improved course. It gained some recognition for that. And although the golf course is costing us money, I'm not willing to let that asset go at fire-sale prices. I believe that it is necessary for us as a city, as the management team, which is responsible for seeing to it that it does as well as possible, to roll up its sleeves and ensure that it is a performing asset on our books. In 2006, I suggested to the manager, then manager and council, that in conjunction with the development that was going on at Newport, we should seek a buyer and get out of the golf business at Bydaway. But that suggestion was not taken, and time has moved on to where that's not a viable proposal. It is my hope that we will manage it well enough so that will again be a viable proposal, and we can concentrate on managing the links at City Park as part of an integrated recreation program for City Park. Lastly, I want to say that in the presentation tonight, I was rather surprised by the claim that when the city went to a new management system, that one of the unexpected expenses was purchase of the prior pro's inventory. It was a known part of the contract with the previous golf pro that he was buying inventory out of his funds, not out of city funds. So when he left, a reasonable expectation would be that he'd not take that inventory with him, and that for the golf pro shop to continue to operate, we would need to purchase those items. So I don't know why that would come as a surprise to anybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to address the gentleman there, but I will say, what's lost in the conversation about Bydaway is what it's done for that whole area over there. If you recall, when Bydaway was renovated, Fairwood Homes was still in place. And the argument can be made that Bydaway was a catalyst for development in that area. With that said, yes, we did issue debt, issue bonds to renovate that, not unlike most things that municipal governments do. Should we always look and entertain a proposal to operate a facility if the private sector can operate it more efficiently than government? And I don't get the feeling all the time we do that. We've recently had two proposals that came into the city. One was to lease the Bydaway operation. The other was to lease Willett Hall. Both operations are in the red, and probably will be in the red for the foreseeable future. But we should at least look at them. We owe it to the taxpayers to at least look at them. They may be good business decisions, they may be bad, but we at least need to look at them. I'm not comfortable that we've done that in the past, and I would like to see us start doing that. You know, the debt service, if somebody leases that golf course, the debt service still goes on until it's paid. But right now, the debt service is going on, and we're projected to lose $22,000, which I think that's a very generous estimate. I suspect it'll be more than that. So if we can lease it, and everybody in the work session was excited about the prospect of leasing Suffolk Golf Course, well, if we get excited about leasing that, we should be excited about the potential lease of Bydaway if it can generate $200,000 or $240,000. That would cut in to the deficit. So, Mayor, I'm just saying that when something comes along, let's at least charge staff to look at it and know its value, and either toss it in the wastebasket or move on. Thank you.
Just for the record, when an unsolicited proposal is submitted to the city, it's a state requirement and a law that we go through a process, so it is thoroughly looked at before it's accepted or rejected. So, and the only reason I'm saying this is I don't want Councilmember Moody's comments to be viewed by the public that someone made this and we didn't look at it. It was looked at, both the Willett Hall asset and, I'm sure, this golf piece. We just can't take an unsolicited bid and throw it away. There is a process by law that we must follow, and if the city determines that this proposal is something that's warranted, then by law, we must go out and ask for anybody else that's interested in bidding on this asset to make sure we're getting the best price. That's only if we accept that bid as viable, and we just can't give it to the unsolicited proposal. So there's a lot of steps that we go through, and Brandon, Mr. Manager, I don't know if you want to comment on that. We talked about this, I spoke about a month ago at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast. That gentleman was there, and we went through that whole thing to make sure we don't mislead people when we get those unsolicited proposals, because we can't just trash them. Mr. Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. You said, part of what I wanted to say, to the point of what you were saying, those proposals were looked at, and it was determined, yeah, the previous manager looked at that proposal, and it was determined that it was not in our best interest to continue to pay the debt on the facility while somebody else repaid the benefits. It strikes me as strange, because when I joined the council, there were serious concerns with the golf course. Former Vice Mayor Whitehurst, I investigated, brought it back to this council. My colleague, who just spoke so eloquently about leasing, didn't want to touch it. But now, he wants to do so. We are not going to give the golf course to someone else and let them make all the money. When this model we have in place now has the opportunity to make money for us, and it's part of our larger recreational facilities for the city, that golf course now is more used by more diverse people than it's ever been used before. With the new model, those monies you were talking about for the pro shop now come to the city. The money for the tournaments now come to the city. The money for recovered balls now come to the city. So this is a model that's working, and we're not going to crush it before it has opportunity to show itself. Suffolk, it's a whole different ballgame. There's no debt on Suffolk. So, yeah, we're excited about leasing Suffolk and get a good price for it. Heck, we could sell it. It doesn't provide anything to the citizens of Portsmouth, so the options there are wide open. Willett Hall, we were not going to lease Willett Hall or sell it for a dollar and then pay the debt, still subsidize it for five years. If we're going to subsidize, we may as well keep it. And that's what these things look like, and that's why we made the decision we made. We have to make good business decisions for the best use of the funds you entrust us with, and taking either one of those proposals was not in our best interest.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Mr. Moody.
Well, this is not a debate forum, but I would like to refer my colleague back to the record, because I've been a frequent spokesperson to lease Bydaway Golf Course. And I think citizens, if you think back, I've advocated that early on. Mayor, as far as unsolicited proposals, I'm very aware what goes on, but when we have people who submit them, that start calling members of council and tell us they haven't gotten any feedback, that tells me that staff hasn't done a good job of communicating. I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to debate you on the subject.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, lots of folks have commented on these unsolicited proposals and who they're reviewed by. The fact of the matter is, by law, they're reviewed by a whole host of employees in the city, but may not be reviewed by the seven of us sitting on this dais. And so, the comments that we may make about those unsolicited proposals are based on staff comments to us, and we are not allowed by law to review them or make recommendations until they've gone through the process.
I don't think anybody said we reviewed them.
I just want the public to know that.
Right. That's why I mentioned about...
But I did say they were reviewed.
Right, they were reviewed.
And I stand by that.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk. Where are we?
We have no additional speakers on this item.
Are you sure? Nobody else?
We're positive, sir. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six one. 15-227, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $219,174 of telephone commission revenue in the FY 2015-16 General Fund operating budget for the Sheriff's Department to fund part-time positions and other operating expenses. Vision principle: Efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldikutrowski.
Dr. Whitaker, you want to wait till he speaks? Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. One last time, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens, not last time in this lifetime, but in this meeting. No election results this time either. I am opposed to this item, not because I don't want to see the Sheriff's Department receive additional funding so that they can provide adequately staffing for the scanners at the courthouse, but because of where these funds originate. This, to me, is one of the travesties in the Commonwealth and in the country, that people who are incarcerated in jails and prisons pay exorbitant rates for their telephone calls to family, and in most cases, family are paying the rates to contact their family members who are incarcerated. At a time in this country when local calls cost next to nothing for regular phone subscribers, and when I can call a mobile phone in Sweden for a little more than three cents a minute, to think that people who are held involuntarily, and when you're talking about people in jail, you're talking about people who have not necessarily been convicted. They are awaiting trial, they do not have the money to make bail, or they have not been arraigned to have bail set. So there's a certain number of people who are innocent being held in jail because of evidence that led to their incarceration, but no determination of guilt. So these people are paying $4 or more a minute, or their families are, for basic communication. And for that money to be appropriated for this purpose rather than for the good of the people who are incarcerated is wrong. I would rather have this money come out of the general fund than for it to come from this source. To me, this is just like when Sheriff Watson allocated $17,000 to buy a backhoe on eBay, and that money came out of the canteen fund. Again, people under lock and key who are being charged exorbitant prices for basic needs, that is wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Godfrey, what Mr. Yutrowski is speaking of, the telephone fund, is that a fund that is controlled by council, or is that a sheriff revenue-generated fund?
It's generated by the Sheriff's Department from telephone charges. It had previously been in a donations account. It is now appropriated in the general fund on the revenue side.
Right, right. So the source of those funds are directly through the Sheriff's Department, the charges, that's not something the city is charging the inmates that make those calls. So I want to make sure the public's clear on that, that that's the sheriff that is charging those inmates those very high prices. Also, Mr. Mayor, I have a concern about the wording of this ordinance. The ordinance is to direct $219,000 towards part-time scanners, and that's not mentioned in the ordinance. It's too broad, and then to have the language and other operating expenses, I think that just leaves too much of a gray area for funds not to go towards the purpose that we are intending. And so, this ordinance needs to be adjusted. And so, Mr. Godfrey, can you speak to that, how we can adjust this ordinance and to make it more specific and not as vague as it is?
Dr. Whitaker, I'm going to defer to the city attorney on the drafting of the ordinance.
Okay.
By statute, courthouse security and courtroom security is under the purview of the sheriff. That's not something that we can, or the council can enumerate under line-item dollars. If he chooses to use those funds towards courthouse and courtroom security, that would be under his constitutional authority, under his authority as a constitutional officer, rather.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, the language here and other operating expenses, what's the necessity of adding that wording?
It was, in our discussion about what we thought was needed for courthouse security, was $180,000. The balance of funds that's being appropriated is the balance that was in the donations account, and so there's a difference. So there's more than $180,000, there's $39,174. So that's the other, for other operating expenses.
So this allocation is not specifically just for scanners?
The recommendations appropriate the funds and... The recommendations appropriate the funds into the sheriff's budget.
Right. But is it for part-time scanners?
We're recommending that $180,000 be appropriated specifically in the part-time salary line item. To my understanding, there are not other part-time employees hired by the sheriff, so that would be the inappropriate use of those funds out of the part-time line item.
Okay. And you're saying the other, the difference, the $39,174?
We didn't recommend any specific use or any specific line item that that would be appropriated in. It would speak for other operating expenses.
Okay.
Madam Clerk? We've already heard from that.
Yes. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six-one. New Business, fifteen dash two twenty-eight, boards and commissions. Councilman Edmonds.
Thank you. We have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Fifteen dash two twenty-nine, items submitted by council members.
Okay. Let me just, first of all, say I missed it in its entirety, but I understand our Seawall Festival was a blast. My daughter graduated from high school and we had family obligations. But I wanna thank staff and all that participated and all of the positive feedback and comments that we get when we host these types of events. And again, it just shows how we can come together and enjoy ourselves, and citizens enjoy the things that we have to offer with neighboring city Norfolk, with the fireworks and the whole Harbor Fest weekend, the tall ships. I think the weather started out Friday a little shaky, but it ended real nice. So thank everybody for their participation and for what you did.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to share a family message with you and my colleagues and the larger community. Two weeks ago at this meeting, I left just as the meeting began because my cousin, who was here visiting from New York City, Dr. Christopher Morse, who was born and raised here in Portsmouth, was rushed to Norfolk General Hospital. And he's still here, but he's doing well and in rehab at Harbor's Edge. But my point in bringing you up to date on his health is that, his comment to me was, "Mayor, you had told him at the Memorial Day Parade he needed to bring one," I think your comment was, "one hell of a good prayer that we needed it." And his comment to me was, "He thought he brought us more together by not being here than bringing good prayer." Because all of you said a prayer for him. Most of you sent me messages, and I thank you very much. And he's doing well.
And the good Reverend is a graduate from Woodrow Wilson High School.
Oh, yes, sir.
That famous, was it fifty-four or fifty-six?
Victory year of fifty-something where they won every title.
With Jimmy Williams and the rest of that crowd. Right. Anyway, thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. In this era that you're noticeable by your absence when you're not here, I unfortunately missed the last meeting due to a death. I was at a viewing. Last night, at a meeting to evaluate our personnel, I had some outpatient surgery, and my face was aching like a toothache, so I had to leave early. But that's not what I really wanted to speak about. You mentioned staff doing a great job for Port Fest, and I echo that. But every time I go there during the Harbor Fest, Port Fest event, I hearken back to what Portside used to be. And what Portside used to be should be once again. I think we need to, once we have some breathing space fiscally, we need to look at reinventing and bringing Portside back. I think you're right. Those events bring people together. If there's ever a time where we need to be brought back together, it's now. And I think venues like Portside can do that. I would like to see some creative ideas on what the new version of Portside could be. I got a feeling it could be something fantastic to even get some people on the other side, the wrong side of the river, back over to the right side of the river. So that would be my suggestion. If there's concurrence, maybe staff can come back at the appropriate time to give us some ideas.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moody. And I concur and agree, and I see our director over here looking and nodding. We have a great deal of things planned along the same lines as that Portside model this year. And I don't wanna put you on the spot to go through everything, but maybe at our next work session, we can bring council up to speed where we are. I was last week with Ms. Margaret Thorne and Mr. LaVore's face, talking to some folks about all the activities we've got coming up. And it does build sound just like the old Portside. And I'm glad staff and we're already going in that direction. But your point is timely. So maybe at the next work session, Mr. Manager, we can have our director or whoever he directs to give us a brief update where we're going with that piece. Because it is exciting, and I'm excited that they're going out and getting this entertainment, bringing these people here, and doing the advertising and all that. And it's all local folks, and it's doing exactly what Portside was intended to do. So we'll do that. Mr. Manager, would you put that? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moody.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Fifteen dash two thirty, report on pending items. Ms. Bernadette Hogg. Before Ms. Hogg comes through.
Dr. Whitaker? I just wanted an update for Mr. Godfrey. We received an email. Are we on track with the disparity study being updated to us by MGT at our work session?
Yes, sir. We sent or are sending our comments back to them either this evening or tomorrow, and that should give them plenty of time to incorporate those and be able to make a presentation. We've got them scheduled for the work session on either the 22nd or the 23rd. I have to look.
Right. So have they?
If you remember which one.
Have they indicated their availability?
Oh, yes, sir. They'll be here. They're probably not coming.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Bernadette.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, I'm Bernadette Hogg, city embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on May 26, 2015. There were 15 non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on May 26, 2015. One of the speakers required action by staff. Cora Lee Fagan expressed concern that she was not receiving her mail and packages on a daily basis at her residence located in the Malvern Hill Apartments on King Street. After speaking with the Portsmouth postmaster and the property manager for the apartments, it was determined that due to construction on King Street, the mail carrier was not able to enter through the front door of the apartments to deliver the mail on one occasion. After this incident, the mail carrier was instructed that he could use the door in the rear to enter into the building to place the mail in the cluster box for the residents. Any packages that are delivered to the apartments are delivered to the door of the residence apartment. It should be noted that originally the mail carrier only had a code to gain access to the front entrance. The mail carrier now has a code, has been given a code to use for both entrances.
Did we follow up with the citizen?
We did. I left her two messages and haven't heard back, but I told her.
She beat me in arm wrestling, so I don't want her to come back here and that mailman isn't showing up.
I'll keep trying, but I left her two messages.
Thank you very much.
Fifteen dash two thirty-one, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Joe Wright.
Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, council members, Intram City Manager Godfrey, Deborah White and her capable staff, Mr. Ron Caddell, Intram City Attorney, whom I had the pleasure of working with a few years ago on a matter in my neighborhood. I'm Joseph R. Wright, 1451 Welcome Road, City of Portsmouth. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanna clear up a few things from last week. I mean, not from last week, but from last city council meeting. You know, some of the people were upset with me because, and they were my civil league people and my church people, even Sergeant Major back here, because they implied, that you all implied that I was the sheriff's boy. Well, I haven't been a boy since the Civil Rights Movement. I'm seventy-eight years old, and I'm a long way from a boy. Now, some people get up here and say, "You guys." But like I say, I'm from the old school. I can plainly see that all of you aren't guys. You know, some of you are girls. So like I say, I'm not anybody's boy, not even the sheriff's. I called down here today to find out when we had the last mayor's prayer breakfast. And I think that she's, Ms. White told me, 2009. I think we need to go back to something like this. We need prayer in this city. Prayer changes things. It brings us together. I can recall the time that we used to pray right down in City Hall, on the steps of City Hall, and right in the middle of the, between the two buildings. I think we ought to get back to that, because there's a division in this city, and it's not doing us any good at all. You know, and I think we ought to get together and try to be as one again, as Doc Holly said, Portsmouth family. Let's get back to the sheriff again. You know, the sheriff is not a politician. In fact, I didn't even vote for him the first time he ran. I voted for all of you all up here. Well, almost all of you all up here. I, like I said, I did not vote for the sheriff. I voted for another candidate the first time he ran. But since then, I found out that the sheriff is a valuable asset to this city. Now, I know the sheriffs duties are not, you know, the only thing he's supposed to do is take care of the courts, the jail, and serve papers. But he does much more than that. And I voted for him every time since then because I know that he's a good man. Like I say, he's not a politician, but he's a good man. So, and instance, I can recall at the last police awards banquet that we had over there at the Dry Dock Club, Mayor, you were there. The sheriff was there with his people. A lady came in that she had a flat tire. Right at the start of the banquet, he went out and changed the lady's tire. She didn't even have a full spare. He had to go down to the service station, get a spare tire, come back and change it for her. He missed most of the banquet. And he does things like that. Now, let's get to the Rotunda Avenue out in my neighborhood again, because somebody told me this was gonna be taken care of. Well, I contacted V-Doc again, and they're saying, you know, Rotunda Avenue in Cavalier Manor is not their property. I have a 800 number. I contacted roads services, and the number is 1-800-367-7623. And the reference number is 2-476780. And they're saying that everything on Rotunda's side of the fence is the city's property. Everything on their side of the ramp is V-Doc property. And it's a jungle out there right now. It's a jungle. I don't even drive toward Crystal Lake anymore at night because it's too dangerous, especially around the curves. And I hate to say this, but if you all can settle your differences, the sheriff will get on that for you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Wright? Mr. Wright, let me just say, you started off, I hope the implication was that anybody here called you the sheriff's boy. Last meeting, when you came up and you articulated some of your concerns, and I thought I was genuine in my comments, that I really do believe the sheriff is a nice guy, and I was there when he went and helped change that tire and did those things. Still, that does not allow or give any of us, because I'm a nice guy and you're a nice guy. We still have to follow the rules. We have to do what we're supposed to do, and we're supposed to work together. And because we're nice people, don't, immune us from doing the things that we ought to be doing. And so, and that's where the difference lies with some of us trying to leverage our niceness to be able to do other things that are not quite nice. And getting along and doing things in the best interest of the citizens is all of our responsibilities as leaders and especially as elected officials. And the issue with the half a million dollars that he's cost us every year since 2010 at the regional jail, that's not nice, Mr. Wright. And those types of things. And to compare costing us a half a million dollars there and another half a million dollars somewhere else, and then kinda equate that to changing an old lady's tire or helping a girl scout across the street, that's, you know, that's not.
Could I comment when you finish?
Yes, you can. That's why, exactly why I'm telling you that. I want you to comment, because we can't do that. And I know I'm exaggerating, but we've gotta get out of that, because this is the business of all of the citizens. And paying taxes and cost and all of those things are all of our concerns. And being nice doesn't allow you to spend more of the taxpayers' dollars and then reframe it as being free. You talk about the free services, and I personally share it with you about the comment and the concerns I had with all of the 59 vehicles that the sheriff owns. And just in vehicles alone, last year, he spent $135,000 in gas, okay? So you equate $135,000 in gas? Did you really get your yard cut for free? That's just gas. And I'm saying, those things need to be, as Mayor Holly always said, put in its proper perspective, and we need not to take those things out of isolation and try to use them for or against an individual. Because I believe good people are good people, but we still need to do our job as elected officials and people in charge of allocating funds and making sure that the local dollars are allocated and handled properly. So now I'll let you respond.
Okay. Since we're putting things in proper perspective.
Yes, sir.
What about the money that the sheriff saved the city by doing the work like down on Rotunda that somebody's gonna have to do because somebody's gonna get killed soon or later going around those curves, where all that overgrowth is overtaking the road? The sheriff, he probably has some figures on how much money he's saving you. The only thing the council's talking about is the money that he's costing you. But I think if you weigh one against the other on the scales of justice, they probably equal out.
Right. But do you agree that we should sit down and make sure we talk about this and on television?
Sure, I do.
And I extended that invitation to the sheriff, and we couldn't do that. We tried.
Maybe I can act as a mediator.
We probably shouldn't need that among elected officials when our focus should be the citizens and the taxpayers' best interest. We should leave egos and all those things aside, because you're right, there are a lot of value that the sheriff and his department add to our city, and we should be able to not only recognize that, but try to utilize and compound that as much as possible if it in turns gives us a return on investment for the taxpayers. So you're right. I just think sometimes we get it out of whack, because again, weighing the good and the bad and say, "'Cause you're a good guy, I get to get away with something." That's not fair to any of us, because I wouldn't expect anybody up here to do that, and I think we're all good guys. And you're not a boy, by the way. Thank you, sir. Good night.
Prayer will solve a lot of these things.
And just for your information, just, was it two weeks ago, Brandon, we had our National Day of Prayer. We do that twice here in the city. We, at 7:30 in the morning, we had a National Day of Prayer at the city compound, where I was there and we all, this is an annual event. I know it's not the big mayor's prayer breakfast that we've been having. And then at noontime, we have one right here in city council chambers with all the folks here, and the public is invited, and we had quite a few pastors and citizens that'd be here. So maybe we need to make sure you guys are aware. Because that National Day of Prayer is a national event and is recognized throughout this country, and we recognize it here in this city every year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir. First of all, the prayer isn't gonna change it. It's gonna take those who are committed.
Prayer changes things.
Yeah, but it takes those committed to social justice and acting. You can't just pray it away.
Well, that's why we differ.
Also, well, we will. Also, you come across as being a historian, and I notice you.
No, I come across as not being a boy. That's all. Don't add nothing to my remarks.
You mentioned history quite, you mentioned history quite a bit. And I'm just curious, because, you know, these meetings are aired publicly, and you mentioned that we need to come back together again.
Yes.
At what point have we ever been together?
I think you ought to take a poll. You will get your answer. Because the only thing you're getting from me is an app. You will get your answer, because the only thing you're getting from me is an opinion.
Right.
See? And I can plainly see that you all are not together. If y'all can't see it, the public can see it.
I thought you were talking about society as a whole.
No, I'm talking about this city council as a whole.
Oh, well, I don't know when that was, because I've never known a time period where it was totally together.
Yeah.
But if you can let us know.
Yes, Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir.
On Rotunda, yeah, it is a problem. I've talked with a guy.
It's a problem. I told you that two weeks ago.
Yeah. I talked with a guy. He told me the same thing that you did. Most of the leaves and branches are from their side.
That's right.
And he's supposed to come by and look at it. I'm going to make sure that he looks you up when he comes by.
Thank you.
He's a personal friend, but he has some insight with the VDOT people.
Right.
Secondly, don't think prayer isn't being prayed. You don't have to be verbal to do it. You can sit where I sit.
Right.
And do it.
Right.
And contrary to whatever happens, our city has done great and marvelous things. And sometimes we disagree, but we're not disagreeable. And when it gets to the point where we are disagreeable, then that is a problem. But I believe that our city has not yet seen the greatness that it has, and nobody's going to stop that, because of divine intervention does help. So thank you for your remarks. Thank you for being a good citizen. Thank you for standing tall and speaking your ground, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Good night, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Roscoe Williams?
Do you remember me? I think it was 2011, in my, the street I was on, I moved in 1975, and I've been there 38 years, and they used to patch my street. So I came down, I asked the city council, would they patch my street? And they had it done. I want to thank the city manager, and I thank the council member who was here in 2011. But now we have another problem. I have a tree, and it's huge, and it's starting to penetrate through the sidewalk, and sooner or later, it's going to fall. Now, my house sits right on the corner where the line starts at. The transformer is about 75, maybe 100 feet from my house. And we have a bad storm. That storm is going to take that tree out, and then the city, for the funnest part, we won't have any lights, and that's why I'm dying tonight. And I'd like to get the city inspector to come out and look at that tree. Either trim it off or either take it down or go do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernadette, what'd you get with him?
Mr. Thomas McAllister? Mr. Stephen Hoag?
My name is Stephen Robert Hoag. I'm a citizen of Portsmouth. I meant to give this speech last week, but I had a previous engagement. My speech will be directed to Dr. Whitaker. Dr. Whitaker, sir, my comments will be somewhat critical of your words made on May 12, 2015. I hope my words are taken as constructive criticism and not as a personal attack on you. I find you to be an intelligent, articulate, educated man, which is why I find your comments particularly concerning. While speaking about Strom Thurmond and the Southern Manifesto, you made the comments, and I quote, "And I just wanted them to realize that much of the comments tonight is not out of a sincerity for budgets, but it goes back to that type of context that has transcended centuries." Let me start with the areas where in agreement. First, Strom Thurmond was a racist congressman. Second, the Southern Manifesto was a racist document signed by primarily Southern Democrats that supported the continued segregation in the public school system. This was two years after the famous Supreme Court decision Brown versus the Board of Education, in which the Supreme Court ruled public schools must be integrated. Here's where I must respectfully challenge you, sir. Although the Southern Manifesto was certainly a racist document, nobody here is advocating segregation. Some are less than tactful, but there is no reason to suggest their comments were racially motivated. So when you correlated the citizens who opposed the education budget to Strom Thurmond and other racists, you used what in debate circles is known as an ad hominem attack, that is Latin for "attack the man." In other words, instead of challenging the citizens' position on education with logic and reasoning, you attacked their character by inferring they were racist. When we use presumptuous racial ad hominem attacks, we unwittingly perpetuate the legacy of Strom Thurmond, which we so ardently oppose. We do this by causing a de facto segregation within our own community. Now, let's take a look at a logical fallacy, remember this is a logical fallacy, that uses similar logic to yours but in a different scenario. Consider the following logical fallacy. Some people who supported the Civil Rights Movement use violence, such as the Detroit riots of 1967. Therefore, everyone who supports civil rights must be violent. This is obviously an offensive and false statement, but it is based on the same type of speculative generalization that you use in your comments. I notice you partake in the invocation, Dr. Whitaker, so perhaps some words from the scripture will suffice to make my point. As the Hebrew said, "The parents eat sour grapes and the children's teeth are set on edge." But the Lord rebuked them and said, "I will judge each of you according to your own ways." Let us not suppose those who oppose the budget are racist because of the sins committed by the previous generation in 1956. Please consider the following prominent African-American scholars whom I hold in high regard, who also disagree with you on education reform. Dr. Thomas Sowell of Stanford University and Dr. Walter E. Williams of George Mason University. I took the liberty of bringing a couple of their books from my personal collection that deal with the topic of education. I'd be happy to let you borrow them. As I have already made clear, I deplore segregation and racism. However, the shamefully ironic thing about your statement, Dr. Whitaker, is that many African-American schools during the segregation era, such as Dunbar High School in Washington, Frederick Douglass in Baltimore, Booker T. Washington in Atlanta, PS91 in Brooklyn, and McDonough 35 in New Orleans, all outperformed the current Portsmouth public school system of today. These commendable men and women succeeded in the face of great discrimination on much less money than the Portsmouth public school system. When we use racism as a scapegoat, with nothing to substantiate it, we belittle those brave African-Americans who succeeded in education in the face of true racism. In closing, I would like to point out there are many reasons not to support the education budget that have nothing to do with race. For example, the average private school in Portsmouth has better test scores, better college graduation rates, and does all this for $5,000 less per student per year. In other words, you could send all the Portsmouth children on a full ride to private school and still cut the education budget in nearly half. Also, our teacher compensation is higher than the state average, yet we have above-average dropout rates and below-average test scores. Furthermore, in the past 12 years, our school budget has increased 47%, with no significant improvement in performance. We also have 28% of high schoolers that can't write properly and 33% that can't pass Algebra I. And by the way, Dr. Whitaker, out of all the groups that suffer from the failures of the Portsmouth public school system, it's African-Americans who suffer the most. The problems are not financial, they're structural, as well as social economic indicators and the government's monopoly on education. Continuing to throw money at the school budget is like putting a Band-Aid over a scratch when you're gushing blood from an artery. I do not support the school budget, not because I don't care, but because I do. Humbly, respectfully, and in good conscience, Stephen Robert Hoag. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoag.
Mr. Tom Mutlow?
Good evening, Mayor Wright.
Good evening, sir.
All our board members. Well, I'm going to start with golf. 2013, I golfed probably 75 to 100 rounds at Bydewee. 2014, I did zero. Your prior management at that course needed to go. That's maybe 100 rounds from one person, because your management does not treat people. I'm glad he's gone. You have a new crew. New things are brewing. Mayor Yu was over at the banquet the other night for the sports people. The gentlemen that are trying to reform the grill that was at there before, they're still learning. But it's a nice place. They're drawing more attention. We have, some of the numbers that are being run are not probably all correct. Let's just take the example, City Park. That grill is getting ready to be open again, which hasn't been open in years, from what I'm told. Same gentleman that's running Bydewee's grill. Please, take a chance. Go over there and eat. Meet the gentleman. They're doing an awesome job. Secondly, the breeding properties with these apartments, if what is true in the pilot and we're going to cap out at $6.3 million to give them to build these apartments, whether it's on 800 Crawford Street and on top of North Pier, for a $475,000 tax return at the end of each year, to recoup that $6.3 million is a little over 14 years. If you want to do business in Portsmouth, you better put a little more skin in the game. There's been made many points at these comments, we need to stop giving our stuff away. Period. Diversity, great idea. This new set of buildings that they're going to put out, how's that going to help our diversity when you're selling one-bedroom apartments at $1,200 a month? I don't see it. And if it's the same thing with Newport and tying Bydewee to Newport, which I've heard, Newport's in trouble. Go look at all the "for sale" signs in there. You've let a developer tie $300 and something dollars plus a month HOA dues to these homeowners that are already strapped. It wasn't a good deal for the citizens of Portsmouth and Newport. Not a good deal. And I hope they don't allow that to happen with new developments that come in. Really not a good deal. Schools, okay? For everyone listening and think that this is a Portsmouth issue, wake up, because it is not a Portsmouth issue. I've been in multiple school districts throughout this country. This is not a Portsmouth issue. This is a nationwide school district problem. Portsmouth is just one city in this state that got the same problem. I came from San Antonio. Want to talk about a train wreck? Yeah. I was also in the Bronx school system. That's another train wreck. But it's not just here. Do I like everything the school board does? No. And they know, I'll tell them. But we all have to work together. Hopefully, we see some changes. June 21st is Father's Day. That golf course in the pavilion is putting out a Father's Day buffet for $10.95, which is cheap. Please, take advantage of it. Go see what they're doing over there. You have a golf pro over there that is struggling right now, because he needs your help to make this succeed. And I think Adam is doing a great job, but he needs your help. He can't do it by himself. You know, there's a comment about how many rounds of golf needs to be played. You have, most of your staff over at that golf course are volunteers, the marshals, the starters, stuff like that. So the 4,000 rounds they give them to play, it's pretty cheap considering you don't have to pay them. I mean, ultimately, do I think they did 31,000 rounds? No. Because I know they didn't get 100 from me. I'm back, and I found out from word of mouth that they changed hands. So marketing, what we were talking about in the meeting, marketing Bydewee, really good idea. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And thanks for your comments.
There are no additional speakers before council this evening?
Okay. We're adjourned. Good night.